Good evening, everyone. This is the East Aurora Union Free School District Board of Education meeting for Wednesday, March 9th, 2022. We're returning from executive session where we discussed the employment history of four particular employees, two matters concerning pending litigation, and matters related to one particular student. There any agenda changes? And no items requiring board action at this time. Superintendent comments?
Yeah, good evening, everyone. I have a few comments tonight, and I'd like to start off by welcoming our new SRO, Steve Cartwright, is here with us today. And so Steve started on Monday, and it's been a really great week. He's visited at the middle school and at Parkdale, and he's going to be stationed primarily at the high school. And so, yeah, he's off to a great start, and we're really excited to have him. I want to thank the town and village for working with us to make it happen. And so just want to welcome to the team. And then just two other things. This week, we've been working with the PTO on a number of projects. And so one of their projects has been the guest speaker series. And so we had Dr. Delaney Russin with us this week. And we partnered up with Orchard Park. And so she's worked between the two districts, working with our kids at different grade levels through five through 12, having different meetings with them. And then she did an evening for families, and it was quite well attended, was on Monday night. Tonight, she's in Orchard Park giving the same presentation. And she talked, she's the author of Screenagers. And I think the board knows, a few years ago, we had another parent, parent night. And we spoke about Screenagers. We had, at that time, a psychologist and eye doctor give you some, give me parents advice on how to manage their children's screen time and engagement with technology in general, not just screens, but social media and those types of things. She also spoke to parents about their use of social media and technology and how we set examples for our children, trying to put the phone down during dinner, and those kinds of things are easy ways to start. She talked about having like specific times where they're technology free, where the family can just talk and be together without the technology. Also, focus on social media and, you know, some of the risk and issues that parents have with their children and also parents' own use of social media, how we can use it in positive ways and how we use it in, in, in not so positive ways. So it was a really interesting evening. Lots of great questions from the audience. And so we're really grateful to the PTO once again for coming through and making it happen. Because it was collaborative, we were able to save quite a bit of money. Because not only were we able to split the cost with Orchard Park, we could also put it through Bosse's as a co-venture and receive that aid costs associated with the program. So, yeah, really great evening. And then I'm really happy to announce that our boys, four by eight, 800 relay team for indoor track, won the state championship. And they, they did it by coming from behind at the last minute. And it was a really great, amazing performance. And now they've gone on to nationals, so they're going down to North Carolina to compete there. And so we're really, really proud of our, of our boys and, and their coach. And who is again, Wobba Gofflin and Marty McGofflin are their coaches. And so we're going to have them with us probably sometime in April or May to, to celebrate as we did with the girls cross country. So again, congratulations.
Congratulations to the boys. That's fantastic. I have a couple of things this evening. I believe I shared with all of you the letter from David Lowery, the ECA's executive director. He sent us a very kind letter after his attendance at our February 16th meeting. It was a very complimentary letter. The one thing he did note was that our meetings tend to be a little longer than most. So I took that as a note, and let's see what we can do, folks. The policy committee will be hopefully meeting in the next week or two. And the policy committee, we all have homework. There are 13 policies that our Bosse's consultant recommends we start with for review. And everyone is to be looking over the list to identify any others that may feel are pressing for the first round. So please provide your feedback to Mr. Membreddy. The Code of Conduct Subcommittee has been assembled. So thank you to Mrs. Daniel, Mrs. Oiler, and Mr. Brunson for agreeing to participate. And stay tuned for more information against Mr. Membreddy. Thank you. And the board self-evaluation went out to everyone. As I last checked, I think I had five, but now possibly six responses. So maybe if that one remaining person could get their response in, that would be great. And then perhaps at the end of the meeting tonight, we can schedule an executive session to review those. That's it for me. Thank you.
I also attended Monday night's presentation. It was, it was really nice to see the amount of people that were actually in the audience. And it was really nice to partner with Orchard Park. And we did so much with talent. It was just really nice to have another neighboring district with us. And hopefully that's something we continue. And Jessica Lyons, she did a great job along with the PTO's facilitating this, so thank you. I know Mr. Membreddy sent out an email concerning slides, if anyone was interested in them, for the Harris Beaches Educational Institution Conference, which was last week. There was one session on personnel, one on board of education issues, and the other one on student issues. I also attended that, so if anyone needs any slides or any information concerning that, I have them. So just send me an email, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Ms. Melles? Thank you. Mr. Cassidy?
I just want to take a quick minute to, to send out my heartfelt condolences to the people of the Williamsville School District who lost two seniors in a car accident earlier this week. I just wanted to bring that up so that they are present in everyone's thoughts. Terrible, terrible thing to lose, you know, children like that. And I can only imagine what they're going through.
You're Mr. Cassidy Wilson. Mr. Flowers?
Yeah, just a couple of things. Since I have no life, I watched an online presentation from the State Education Department regarding COVID release relief reporting and the finances. And it's, it's another, it's, it's a long process. It's going to be a lot of participation by many people in the organization. It's just one more thing, it's a drain on our staff and the time that they have here to certainly educate our children and get things ready for the year end and for next year. But we just watched, what I watched was on HESR and GEAR. And those are some of the smaller grants. So one guy wrote, there was 448 participants in that online presentation. The frustration was amazing about how many man-hours it would take to actually complete these forms. Someone wrote in, there really is no such thing as free lunch. Certainly, the, the aid itself is very important to our district and to all districts. But the requirements on our administrators to complete these forms might be exhausting, I think, over the next three years. So I just want to throw that out there. Just a little bit of ad time, I'm sure someone here either watched it or knows of it. And then we did have a budget of finance committee meeting. Mr. Brunson and Mrs. Daniel attended that meeting as well. As usual, you've got in your budget notebooks, the minutes from the meetings and a lot of financial information that we shared there. Just a couple of things I want to point out. There was a more of a follow-up on the anticipated establishment of the repair reserve. So some more information was supplied there. It's all good information. I just want to bring that up a couple of times, because that could very well be something that we want to submit to the voters this year. The committee does support that. The committee reviewed updates on administrative cabinet meeting recommendation regarding budget priorities. As we get more on that tonight, from what I've seen from the slideshow, and there'll be more of that in the future as well. And then just a comment Mr. Brunson made that I think we should discuss, maybe not tonight, but as we move along. He'd like the district to review excess amounts in expenditure budget, so we don't have large surplus at year end without taking unnecessary risk. To consolidate that, Mr. Brunson was sure to be correct. But it's an important, it's an important point to identify, identify those as we take a look at the priorities from the district level, from the board level, and even the community level. And I think that's what's, what's going on here. And I think that's an important part as we watch a presentation and think about what our priorities are and exactly what resources we have to meet, you know, some of those priorities and rank those. So there's a lot of discussion going on. We appreciate the efforts certainly from the business office. And some things the minutes don't pick up. You can't, you can't do it. I mean, certainly the lively discussion we had, everyone's take on, you know, short-term and long-term consideration of the upcoming budget. So meetings are somewhat enjoyable, conversation is good, and we seem to get a lot done. I'm going to share what over tonight will go, but I just want to share that.
Very much, Mr. Flowers. Thank you for your time on the online call. Thank you for shedding some light on what's to come for our district officials. That's really good for the board to know. I found the meeting notes from the budget finance committee to be very thorough. So thank you for expanding on them. But to whoever is note-taking, thank you. That is phenomenal information. It was really, really helpful. Thank you. Mr. Brunson? Mrs. Daniel? All right. Thank you all. Moving on to community time, community comments. Do we have anyone who's requested to speak? Oh, I'm so sorry. I'm jumping around. Please hold. Sorry, folks. Thank you all for being here. Would anyone like to share anything this evening?
Hello, Ms. Pantone? Good evening. I just wanted to announce some really exciting things. We are super excited this Friday. We have the opportunity to have a National Book Award finalist be an author presenting on Friday to our students. This is long and awaited author visit. Thanking Jessica Lyons for putting that together. And our students are fairly eager to have a real published author on Friday. And so I just wanted to share that really positive news. I also wanted to share some of the leadership opportunities that some of our fourth graders are engaging in. We recently gave an interest survey out to all of our fourth graders. We have them doing public announcements now, working with some of our kindergarten teachers, and most recently engaging as leaders of our assemblies. This week, we even have several of them engaging in a safety patrol training session. Really hoping Mr. Cartwright, he's not here right now, will come swear our fourth graders in for that opportunity. And finally, just a great big shout out to Mary Ann Hubbard. She came in Friday or this past week and did a wonderful job working, getting some of our high schoolers down to work with our elementary students. Beautiful opportunity and want to thank them. That's all for this evening. Thanks.
Very much. Thank you for sharing. Anyone else this evening? Thank you all for being here. Okay, sorry about that, folks. Moving on to community comments. You have all been here before, so I'm, I'm going to guess you know the rules. Three minutes apiece, and we'll start with Mrs. Horning.
No need for a timer tonight. I'll be very brief. We're seeing a lot of implementation of new positions, aides, a lot of administration. Just wondering, and obviously you're not going to answer the question, because my questions never get answered. But I just wanted to bring to light, when the federal money dries up, who is going to pay for all these extra positions? And secondly, with all of the money that's come in, the 3.7 million, 3.334 million over the next three years, will there be a reduction in taxes for us taxpayers? Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Horning. Please do stay tuned as we work through the budget process. And part of, I believe we've already started having conversation at the board level about making sure that we have plans moving forward after those federal dollars have dried up. Thank you. Mr. Tork?
Good evening. The last time I stood in the auditorium was June 1980 during my high school graduation. League of Women Voters had presented me with an award, the highest award for students civic engagement. A month earlier, I'd been arrested for painting "Save the Whales, Not the Pentagon" on the water tower down the street, and was chosen by my senior class to speak at graduation. At the last minute, Don Lawson, the principal, replaced me, while the school board president, Allison Hyde, sent me a card saying "secret congratulations" on the water tower project. So some 40 years later, thank you for allowing me to speak. I returned to East Aurora in 2014 to take care of my parents. And as a displeased New York City photographer, I began noticing that East Aurora, in my youth, it'd be called a lovely historic village, was a village that was thinly wrapped in a veneer of respectability and denial. I began photographing the unseen buildings, the buildings off the radar, the three collapsing cottages at Nux Farm, and the crumbling collection of Roycroft campus buildings. While photographing the village's less than spectacular execution of the Oakwood Project, it was confirmed there was an absence of serious local leadership. I kept scratching the surface and met up with a local group interested in school board issues, East Aurora Guardians, knowing full well that the U.S. Attorney General was already looking at parents who were outspoken in school boards and labeled them with a domestic terrorist threat label. Engaged, I filed the notice of default that you've all seen. Last year, Dan Brunson was administered his oath of office by a notary per documents obtained via FOIA, who was not qualified for this role. I notified the board of this default, and you stated via the local newspaper that you should not, that you would not take any action. Why should Dan Brunson get a free pass? He's a nice guy, but why should he get a free pass? Last month, we learned that the anti-racist Dr. Jovan Hunter was hired to lead an ELA faculty workshop under the cloak of diversity, inclusion, and integrity. When you scratch the surface of Jovan Hunter's past workshops, conceptually rooted in CRT frameworks, he encourages his workshop participants to enter into struggle sessions with students and by extension to their families to reveal their ostensible white privilege. Not only is this anti-intellectual, the corrosive side effects involving family breakdown during these struggle sessions are well documented and antithetical to what I thought East Aurora once represented. Finishing up here, since the school board is not questioning this practice and its pernicious side effects on students' well-being and future academic success, it decided to launch a new East Aurora Facebook group, East Aurora Schools CRT Watch. As a former Buffalo High School Social Studies Department Chair and a former Buffalo Teachers Center board member and an established critic of the left's, long marched through the institutions through my academic work involving cultural Marxism, I'm uniquely qualified to help the community understand the profoundly disturbing racist message you're sending and encouraging. Thank you.
Mr. Tork? Mrs. Mona?
John Mona, Greenwood Court. When a board of education has a policy, it should mean something. When a board of education member swears to an oath of office, swearing to uphold the Constitution and laws of the United States and New York State, it should mean something. When a superintendent is entrusted with the care and safety of our students and staff, it should mean something. A law is not optional. A policy is not irrelevant. A district safety plan is not a bunch of papers on the shelf. And the Constitution is not obsolete. It is the responsibility of the board and superintendent to win the trust of the community through transparency and accountability. It is not the responsibility of the community to give away the trust unconditionally and without question. Community members who ask questions, seek answers, demand compliance with law and policy should not be shunned or silenced. They are not criminals, disruptors, or distractors. They and their associates are not suspects or terrorists that deserve to be spied on. They are guardians of democracy exercising responsible citizenship. Is that lesson in civics still being taught in the classrooms of East Aurora? Is it being honored in the boardroom of East Aurora? Is the oath of office to uphold the Constitution and its free speech protections something pronounced with integrity? Or is it just another meaningless task, not worth the paper it's written on?
We are moving on to reports and discussion items. Item A, Business Office Financial Reports. Mrs. George?
Good evening. Good evening. Tonight's financial reports are, as of January, our general fund at the end of January had approximately $16.1 million, which ties to our cash flow statements. And I'm still happy to report that our cash flow still looks very well to get us through the summer months. At the end of January, we had expended approximately 46% of our budget, and we have received approximately 76% of our revenues. The other fund that I'd like to report on is the School Launch Fund. In as of the end of January, revenues exceeded expenditures by approximately $18,000. And again, I just caution that there's always a timing difference between the revenues and expenditures, but it gives you a little bit of a snapshot. And the only other thing I had tonight is our grid that we normally, Mr. Membreddy presents. We're going to present in our next meeting. Any questions? Anyone?
Thank you very much. Thanks, George. Ms. Lyons? Item B, the English Language Arts Curriculum Review.
Okay, good evening. This is our last curriculum review presentation for this year. And we have English Language Arts up tonight. And I have Amy Marklinger, the Chair of the Middle School English Department, and Jason Zebenbergen, the Chair of the High School English Department. And I am Kim McAtee tonight, the Chair of the K4 English Department. So I'll be speaking for her today. She sent me some notes, what she wants to say for her slides, but I'm going to turn it over to Amy and Jason to start us off.
Good evening. We began our curriculum review for ELA K12 by examining the district's value and vision statement. And we thought a lot about what our role as a K12 ELA department is in achieving that vision for our students. That led us to creating a purpose philosophy of the ELA department. What are our goals when these students leave our walls and, you know, head into the world? Wanting them to be students that view the world and its people with empathy, but also understanding, fostering a desire for lifelong learning, and having the tools and the knowledge to succeed. And you can see our more detailed philosophy on the slides that you were given. We then looked at the last five years and what we wanted for our students for the future, but also what their current needs are, especially in light of the global pandemic we are experiencing. We thought pretty deeply about what our students' needs are and how that should inform the decisions that we make, both instructionally and in choosing materials. So goals such as providing opportunities for students to work through challenging tasks, to encourage growth mindsets that celebrate the journey as well as the destination, prioritizing skills in instruction to have students see reading and writing as a lifelong journey, and making sure we provide equity and inclusive instructional practices for all of our learners. After we identified these goals that are more detailed on the slide, we then looked at each of our buildings and what we are currently doing, and then what our needs are.
Thank you, Amy. A quick overview of ELA at Parkdale. Their focus, obviously, in any given day is mostly ELA and math. We have a 90-minute ELA block. It looks a little different at each grade level, but does, at every grade level, include developmentally appropriate activities such as read alouds, word study, small group practice, large group instruction, independent reading and writing, and writing mini lessons. In grades kindergarten through second, there is, continue to use and want to continue to use the CKLA, the Core Knowledge Curriculum, with its skills in listen and learn components, with additional lessons to supplement writing. And in grades three and four, they're focusing on standards-based instruction using new literature that's engaging and more inclusive. This is a transitional period for third and fourth. Teachers are beginning to work cohesively at each grade level to create units of reading and writing that are more, just as I said, cohesive and consistent within a grade level. A couple of pictures here. Everybody likes to see pictures of Parkdale kids working. So a picture tells a thousand words. Here you can see some primary students engaged in word study, whole group instruction, writing, editing, shared reading, and reading what they've written to their peers. They're having a writing celebration there in the middle with the balloons and reading their writing pieces. Here are some more pictures. These are some third and fourth grade students engaged in reading responses with an art project. They work together to write about a topic, creating projects and using print all around the classroom to build their skills. And then some areas of need. It looks like a lot, but some of them are small. They would like to, before pre-COVID, we had started some professional development on writer's workshop. And we had everybody up and going. We had phased it in K2, and then we were bringing in, we brought in three, grades three and four teachers. The teachers really, really enjoyed that. COVID hit, so we had to stop doing that. We'd like, they like to resume writer's workshop training. They like to replace some worn copies of, every classroom has a classroom library of books that kids can just pick from when they have some free time, or it's free read. So they just need to replace some worn copies of some popular books in their classrooms. They'd like to increase some curriculum hours over the summer, the summertime, so they can work more collaboratively, collaboratively together for horizontal alignment and vertical, not only within Parkdale, but also fourth, fifth, or they'd like to do that, spend some time with their colleagues. Again, some more curriculum work to give teachers who are new to a grade level some more time to learn about the ELA curriculum and some more time to improve the ELA section of the report cards. They, they modify the standards a little bit with the Next Gen standards, so they do have to modify the report card to match the next generation standards. And just purchased some additional copies of books to complete some class sets for grade three. They bought, Mr. Membreddy bought half of them last year, and they like to just add to their, the collection. So every child has a book to read and purchase some supplemental materials that complement the literature already in place to use with, to help differentiate. So some more literature for the advanced readers and some more for the struggling readers. Same themes and skills, but just different reading levels to differentiate. Pass that to Amy.
So our ELA five through eight, we really see it's a bridge between Parkdale and the high school. And the program model really does support that. Students receive 80 minutes of ELA instruction in fifth and sixth grade across two separate classes. So 40 minutes of reading and 40 minutes of English, which includes the writing and the language standards. In seventh grade, those classes combine for a single 40-minute class, and that continues in eighth grade with a 40-minute English class. All of the classes five through eight include co-taught classes with special education teachers and reading specialists. We also have an AIS pull-out program that gives specialized small group instruction to students that are identified at risk. And while not officially part of the English department, our LEAP program for eighth graders provide another opportunity for students who are ready for a challenge. Many of the tasks and design thinking procedures in that program reflect the next generation learning standards. This slide has an overview of some of the curriculum highlights at each grade level. All classes fifth through eighth plan their curriculum alongside the next generation learning standards, but also with the goals to develop lifelong readers, students who Students who have strong critical thinking skills can collaborate with others and communicate and use their voice. So in fifth grade, the teachers really try to get the kids excited about reading. Activities like book raffles, interactive notebooks, and book talks help kind of develop that passion for reading. In addition, the English class provides a variety of opportunities for students to explore various writing genres while developing those foundational skills in vocabulary, spelling, and grammar. In sixth grade, developing that lifelong reading continues with the Twenty Book Challenge, which is a choice book activity that is done throughout the entire year. In addition, there's a lot of collaborative projects in English where students get to explore topics through research, collaborate with their peers, and then share their findings with their classmates. Seventh grade continues building reading identities through choice reading, but because it is a forty-minute class that combines, it has echoes of what the students learn and or experience in fifth and sixth grade. But with some project-based learning approaches, we strive to help the students write to an authentic audience and collaborate with their peers and make connections with the world. The eighth grade class, it really completes that transition to the high school where units are structured thematically around novels, and students have the opportunity to dig deeper and talk about some more complex issues through both speaking and writing. Here are some of the highlights of some of the activities. In seventh grade, students read the book A Long Walk to Water. And over the past several years, we've had some lost boys who settled in Buffalo through reaching out to Africa, come in and speak to students about their experiences. It just brings the book to life, and it shows them that what they're reading on the page is a piece of the world around them. Students participate in debate. There's Ms. Patello there being a judge. And we try to set up classroom environments that foster conversations around what they're reading. Here are some book raffle pictures along with examples of what students are doing in their interactive notebooks. And finally, materials such as a variety of classroom novels, subscriptions to scholastic magazines such as Storybook, or Storyworks, excuse me, really do help us achieve some of those goals in showing the students the world through the literature and articles that they're reading. Our areas of need and recommendations include smaller class sizes in seventh and eighth grade, particularly because they're transitioning from an eighty-minute experience in fifth and sixth grade. Smaller class sizes in seventh and eighth grade would really help us personalize some writing instruction, give timely feedback, and provide opportunities for conferencing. We would love to work with Parkdale and the high school on vertically aligning our spelling, grammar, and writing program so that we can help continue being the bridge between those two schools. I did want to mention something that's already existing, but super important, and that is maintaining the two AIS reading teachers and the co-taught classes. This really helps us differentiate instruction and meet our students' needs. One of the bigger projects that is coming out of this curriculum review for us is examining the texts that students read fifth through eight, making sure that students can see themselves in the books that they're reading, making sure that there is a diversity of representation, that the books are addressing relevant topics. And because our program is all about developing reading identities and an excitement for reading, having the funds to purchase smaller class sets of sequels and authors that students fall in love with. We also are interested in purchasing new support materials for English for the fifth and sixth grade students that would help align the vocabulary and grammar instruction. We also are interested in purchasing classroom furniture that supports kind of building that community of discussion and promoting discussion and collaboration, as well as having a yearly budget so that as students express to us a passion for a certain book, a certain series, or a certain author, we can make those purchases and not have to wait until June so that we can be responsive to the students and what they're telling us they need and capitalize really on their excitement.
Thank you, Mr. Zebenbergen. Before you speak, I'm going to ask the folks in the audience, if you had a need to talk to each other, I'd ask that you please go out in the hall where we can't hear you. It's very distracting and very disrespectful to the folks who are making presentations. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Zebenbergen.
Good evening. So the presentation starts with just some pictures of our students engaged in the activities of our classrooms. See, there's a variety of them. Some of them with a new class broadcasting in the top right corner. And one of the nice things, of course, at this point, we still had masks, but we're able to do so much more this year than we have been able to do in the last two years. You know, just kind of returning to some more normal activities, which has been really nice. This first slide has just a list of the classes that we currently offer. And I just wanted to highlight that since our last curriculum review, we've been able to add a number of classes. Like Amy was talking about, we're really working hard to be responsive to the needs of our students. So since our last curriculum review, we've added AP Seminar, AP Research, Broadcasting, Sports Society, and our Public Speaking Class. So we're really quite excited about all those classes that really address a range of interests of our students. In terms of highlights, again, we believe we've been really successful in meeting the needs of our students, being flexible during the pandemic in terms of having creative activities that still advance their reading and writing skills. And this year, we've been able to return to camping field trips. I know my AP Research class and AP Seminar class went to U B to do research at the library there. And Film Academy too has been able to go on a field trip as well for their activities. So again, we're working hard to maintain engagement of our students in the learning process. In terms of planning recommendations concerns, you know, one of the things that we've been working on as a focus, and many of you have been involved in that, is reviewing our, the text we use to support a curriculum to ensure that they meet the needs of our students in terms of the inclusive, in terms of addressing issues of diversity and equity, but also supporting the new, the next generation learning standards in terms of text complexity. And over the year, we've been able to work to adopt a new set of textbooks that will help us to do that, that have writers from a diversity of backgrounds, dealing with the diversity of issues that are facing our community and our world today. And besides the textbooks, we've been also working to adapt some new novels and some new nonfiction texts that also work towards that end. We are, in terms of recommendations, like Maggie was talking about, we're also thinking about the physical environment of the classroom. You know, the classroom hasn't been updated and really repaired, I think, maybe since the building was remodeled. And, you know, they still have these old TV parrels in there. It would be nice to replace and have bookshelves that we could store books on or provide books for students on. Before the pandemic began, we were talking about trying to replace our desks with more flexible seating to have, create a more collaborative environment in the classroom. So things like that could really enhance the learning environment for our students.
And we have, if you have any questions, if there's anything I can answer for Parkdale, Kim said to shoot her email, and she will answer it if I'm not able to. If you have any questions for any of us right now, feel free.
Mr. Brunson.
Thank you. Very nice presentation. Appreciate it.
Use Kim's. Carol Kim's will figure it out.
Doesn't matter. My voice carries.
I can hear you.
Yes. Thank you for the presentation. Excellent. A question regarding, actually, two questions. There was an article in this morning's Buffalo News lamenting the the loss of reading achievement in young children, particularly first graders, second graders, who missed a significant amount of instruction over the past couple of years. And apparently, they've done some studies along those lines, and they're attempting to to decide what can be done to help. Do we have any data for our district? And if we don't, do we have at least some anecdotal impressions as to whether this is a problem and how serious it might be?
I don't know about data from this year, but.
I can say that we just analyzed data from fall to winter. And I think some of the data from the past fall to winter, and it looks like we really are very much the same. So I would say, even though some of the kinds of things are happening out this year, our triangle or our, sort of speak, trajectory has really been mitigated. And I think useful things like the AIS Support Provider have been really worth mentioning.
Yeah, I know we analyzed the data last year just to look, and I feel like there was a significant gap in learning loss. And then it sounds like this year, there's not a significant gap. There's definitely a couple of kids here or there, depending on circumstances. They're probably further behind than they would have been. I don't think it's a larger systemic problem at Parkdale.
Well, that's good to hear. Yes. The article, obviously, is a national story. And I think one of the things, in addition to providing support services, one of the things that you folks did at Parkdale was to make sure that you focused during those half-days on English Language Arts.
Yeah, the kids had ninety minutes of in-person ELA with their teacher four days a week.
So they were getting that same instruction. So there were some other areas that may have suffered a bit, science or whatever.
And it was only with eight or ten, twelve kids in a class. It wasn't even with the whole.
Well, there's another advantage. You know, when you have ten or twelve students, you can certainly concentrate more and accomplish more. So thank you very much. That's very encouraging to hear. And one more question relates to the very last recommendation at the high school, which I'm having trouble understanding. So I wonder if you could elaborate a little bit on what it means to adopt flexible scheduling to accommodate increased grading due to curriculum changes and the additional practice needed to address learning loss around writing.
Yeah, so the idea there is, you know, during the pandemic, we've worked hard to be responsive to building, you know, writing and reading tasks that maintains and advance students' levels of reading and writing. But there is a loss in the sense that their ability to work through larger pieces in a sustained way proficiently, that's been impacted. And so we've had to increase the students' opportunities to have those experiences of sustained writing and reading tasks. And because of that, it just takes more time to do that grading. So the flexible scheduling in the sense that when we're thinking about things like duty, like duties, you know, that we are in study halls where we can do some of that grading versus like in a cafeteria, cafeteria duty, where you're not able to use that time, obviously, to degrade.
Now, I'm beginning to understand it. So you're talking about grading papers. So you're creating,
Right, you're creating more papers by encouraging more writing in their way. So it's like thinking about the schedule, how can we create timeless schedule to do more of that grading? And it was really important, giving feedback, direct feedback on students' writing.
Thank you. Now I understand.
Yeah.
Thank you. Other board members? Mr. Flowers?
The question regarding elementary school at fifth and sixth regarding classroom furniture that supports lifelong reading, writing culture. Do you know anything? Okay?
No.
You couldn't?
So you're asking about classroom furniture that would support the lifelong reading and writing practices. So I think when it comes to fifth and sixth grade and entering a classroom and building an excitement of reading and reading identity, we want to do our best to replicate those environments where students can get cozy with a book and after reading a book can talk with their classmates in a collaborative way. So different flexible seating options would be things such as spaces where perhaps there are video rockers on the floor, or there are, actually, I have a picture. I myself, I applied with the foundation a couple of years ago for a flexible seating grant for my classroom. And so that picture, it kind of right underneath the EA logo. That is pre-COVID what my classroom looked like, where there's these collaborative spaces, almost like a coffee house where students can, you know, take a book and settle in for twenty minutes and really read and then turn and talk with their classmates. Flexible seating from a learner perspective really helps students who might have ADD or ADHD be able to use strategies that can help them, whether that's a desk that has like a bouncy van. There's all sorts of different types of flexible seating. Standing desks. So that recommendation for flexible seating includes both creating a welcoming, positive environment. And like Jason said, our classrooms really haven't changed. And so thinking about how we can create environments that foster collaboration and that are naturally set up to do so. Things like having blank whiteboards and white spaces in the room so that students can brainstorm together. Furniture that allows students to face each other, to talk, things such as that. That's what we do by flexible seating. If we were able to do something like that, what our next steps would be, would be to do some research about what type, what would be the purchases that we would be recommending based on the research and what we know about students as learners and creating those flexible environments. Yeah.
Mr. Dela?
My favorite day of the year as a school board member is when we go into the schools and actually visit them. And what we did this year, we went into all three schools and saw English classes being taught in each building, even the broadcasting class, which was absolutely amazing. And it's just, it's so nice to see what is being taught K through twelve for our English department. So kudos to all of you that are involved in the department because you do such a great job. And that's not an easy subject to teach. My question concerns the middle school. One of your recommendations or areas of need is smaller class sizes in seventh and eighth grade English. I don't know if this could be answered right now, but approximately what are the numbers currently in those classes?
I'd have to get you the exact numbers, but it varies a little bit by grade level. But typically, they are in the twenty-three to twenty-five range for the most part.
And what are you looking for?
I would say twenty. And you feel what she said?
Yes, twenty.
And that speaks to something that Jason identified as well, as we are responding to students' need. And we're seeing too that need to create writing assignments that also involve research that help build student stamina and working through a task. And when that happens, the classroom environment is one where you want to conference with a student. And with forty minutes, getting through twenty-five students, you know, any, any class size that's twenty, eighteen to twenty, is going to help us give more targeted, one-on-one feedback in a timely manner. So that's where. So that's where that recommendation came from.
Thank you very much. And that's all the questions I had. Thank you.
Thank you. I had the same question for the high school that we happen to know what are nine through 11. And we don't need the answer tonight, but if we know where we are and where we hope to be, that would be helpful.
Oh, it's about the same, right around 20 for the same reasons. Yeah.
Yes, Mr. Val.
I just want to say, I agree with Terry. Our, my favorite day was always setting up and being able to visit the schools. First of all, the administrators are wonderful at organizing with us. And we've been trying to keep it early so we don't interfere with things that are going on with you guys too. But so kudos for that. But we did get to see that broadcasting with Mr. Commons this year, and it was out of this world. I mean, just knocked our socks off. I did a webinar a while back and kudos to everything you guys are doing. But the webinar had to do with New York State's mandates for E L A in particular. And it is a mandate from New York State that you will address inclusiveness, equity and diversity. And I'm on the textbook committee and we just okayed new textbooks for you. And we're going to be looking at some novels for your A P and seniors. And I believe that this E L A development that we have going on K-12, and it is important that it be vertically aligned. But I do believe as, as that is the most critical part of helping kids to think critically about their social life, about what's around them, about what's available, about what they have to live with and what their workplaces are going to look like. And I'm just, I just, I've been amazed at what you're doing. And by the way, Amy, Elka and I years ago were working on that flexible seating because I had all the A D H T middle school boards. It was huge. And it just, there's nothing like it. If every kid can start to find a spot where he feels comfortable and then to pick up that book and start reading or to collaborate and work on a project together. I know my third grade grandson and my sixth grade grandson have both come home with messages about E L A that they've enjoyed. And I'm just grateful for what you people do and don't quit doing it because we need it as a society.
Mrs. Val.
This is Danny.
I just have a quick question going to the grammar. And we've talked about there are a couple of different points about grammar and it being vertically aligned. And I know that in some of our discussions, we've talked about the high school work and the grammar. And I'm just wondering what that looks like to vertically align grammar K through 12 and what we would need to do in order to get to that point. Thanks.
Yeah, teaching grammar, there's a lot of different philosophies for how to do that. You know, some, you know, some philosophy would be to teach in the context of the reading and writing tasks.
I'll speak into a little more just because I got to cut it up here. You're on, just got to get in front of it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, so, you know, one of the approaches is to teach it within the context of the reading and writing tasks at hand. And then another approach is to teach it as a standalone, where you have more of a formulaic formulaic approach to teaching grammar where you have, you know, very targeted exercises towards different medical concepts. So to vertically align would be in part for K-12 is first to determine which, which concepts are being taught at which level. And then the second piece would be the how, you know, do we need to have consistency and how that instruction occurs around those concepts? Do we teach it in the context of the reading and writing task? Or do we develop a program that teaches it outside of that as a standalone units? Yeah, and you know, and both of us, you know, Amy and I have been talking about the need for bridge programs from fourth, fifth grade and from eighth to ninth grade. And in some ways, you know, you know, developing those bridge programs could help to foster discussions around that as well.
Yeah, and I think whenever you can develop a shared language, K-12, it lessens confusion for students. If I know, kind of have an opportunity to take a deep dive into what my colleagues in fifth and sixth grade are doing, the projects they're doing and how they're implementing grammar, and then knowing what I'm sending to Jason and our colleagues at the high school, I can make decisions in my own classroom that are very intentional, that are designed to both echo what students have done before they come to me, but also introduce them to concepts that the high school will need to take a deeper dive into. So it's a lot of conversations and learning about what we're doing at each grade level, but then having conversations about what adjustments then need to be made so that that journey is smoother and, you know, ultimately help students.
As a program, it's just more effective if we're building it with what's already been done. You know, teaching grammar from scratch is really very time consuming. And like we both were talking about, you know, 40 minutes is just not a lot of time. And so to consume that with a lot of grammar instruction, you know, I mean, there's a gain there, but there's also obviously lots of loss as well. So building vertical alignment would help efficiency of teaching that K-12.
So Jason, just so I can understand, so is this something that you're currently planning and attempting to get in place? I'm just, I'm just trying to understand.
Yeah, right now, we're, yeah, right now, we're having conversations. K-12 and in the high school, we are trying out different approaches to see which one is most effective for students. We haven't really quite settled on a particular pathway yet. You know, it's too early to do that. And even within the department, you know, we have, you know, obviously different ideas about how grammar should be taught in different comfort levels with teaching it. So, but our goal is to, you know, to have a program that, you know, that is effective in bringing grammar instruction to our students. But importantly, allows us, you know, the purpose is really for us to be able to have, you know, sound discussions about their writing. You know, one of the problems we're finding is we're talking to students about how their sentences are working, but don't quite have a shared language to do that. And so having grammar instruction will give us that shared language for talking about what's happening in their writing. Yeah, you know, so in terms of verbal feedback, but also in terms of written feedback that we give students. In terms of critical thinking and critical, you know, close reading tasks too, that are part of the next generation standards and obviously part of the A P classes. You know, knowing grammar too becomes an area to go for analysis as well to understand the intentionality behind how a writer is constructing a sentence. So there's a lot of layers that we can go into in terms of grammar, you know, if students have a deep enough understanding.
And I think also at Parkdale, you know, every teacher's in the English department. I mean, they're not, there's representatives, but you know, they haven't been reviewed in six years because we skipped last year. So I think they're always working at it, but teachers have changed grade levels. I'm thinking of Mrs. Converse, who five years, six years ago, she was in the middle school and now she's in first grade. They just need time to like with the new teachers, teachers that switch grade levels and make sure and get back on track, I guess, from the last six years and continue, discontinue the work and have more time to do that. I'll answer questions, Board.
Thank you. Oh, I'll pass it over to you in just a second, Fred. I just want to say thank you so much. I'm blown away and so grateful for this opportunity to recognize another level of what is so amazing about our school district. Thank you for your time and dedication. Thank you for nerding out on grammar. This is amazing and we are so very fortunate to have all of you. Thank you.
And yeah, really a lot of thanks to these, the three kids out here, but they, they have teams that they lead, but they put in hours and hours just getting feedback from everybody and putting these presentations together. And the three of them just getting all that information and bringing it back. And they've met several times. I think we started in October meeting to do all of this work. So thank you for all of your work and harden time.
Yeah, I'd just like to thank the two of you and also Miss Nettie. I know she couldn't be with us today. And I think, I know you're doing brilliant things in the classroom. And I think instructionally, it's just, I'm always so impressed. And I think it's your creativity to continue to adapt and look for new ways to engage your students, like the LEAP program, the electives that, you know, J C were talking about developing over a period of time. The course catalog is always something I'm very proud of because of the creativity that goes into it and the opportunities that come from it for our students. And the two of you are certainly leaders in that and just so grateful for your work. And it must be really great to be in your classroom because I'm sure the kids enjoy it every single day. So thank you. Thank you for being here tonight, too.
Thank you very much. We are moving on to item C, the draft preliminary school district budget.
Okay, I'd like to welcome everybody tonight to the next installment of our budget development. Yes, our agenda, we're just going to take a quick look at our values and vision again and what kind of drives all of our decisions. We'll look at what the budget finance committee has done over the last six months. And then the budget development considerations, federal stimulus, reserves, state aid, budget priorities, both some of the past priorities and what are the priorities for this coming year? And then the tax cap and rate. We'll look at per pupil expenditure, the budget development calendar, and then we'll start with the discussion. So here it is. It's not hard to make decisions when you know what your values are. And so we've spent a lot of time with that and we talk about this every time we introduce the budget. You know, we really have focused on developing our values, what are the core mission, foundation of why we're here? And from that, we develop our vision on a annual basis. And that's pretty much based on the needs of our students. Good teachers that like were here tonight are continually evaluating and and making decisions around how we can improve our process and how we can improve our students' experience. And that's all based around the values and visions that we developed several years ago. So our commitment again, first and foremost, we are dedicated to the interests of our students. As again exhibited today, I think our two teachers who were here with us today and Miss Lyons, thank you for filling in for Mrs. Mamathy, really show how committed they are and that's pretty much across the board at all levels. We're committed to exercising good care and judgment and managing the resources that are provided to us by our community. We're also committed to conducting our business in an open and objective way, sharing it at our board meetings and in other ways through our website. And then we're committed to constant improvement, which is one of our core values. You know, we're always looking forward and trying to improve the processes that we use. So the budget finance committee, you can see we started all the way back in October. And it starts off fairly slowly because we don't have a lot of information at that time. But we just start putting things out on the calendar that we want to talk about. Like in October, we talked about a capital project timeline because we're looking at a potential vote this December. And that comes up pretty quickly. Again, we looked at the budget calendar, what does that look like in December? Continued on in January and February, again, getting more detailed. We get our fiscal stress score. We look at the initial of tax levy and we do a carryover discussion. So there's a lot of things that develop over time. So we have two more meetings, once on the 14th and once on the 28th. And basically what we do is we meet the Monday before the board meeting. And that kind of sets the agenda, I mean, with administrators, I mean, with other advisors in terms of planning for the budget. And so we'll have two more meetings at least this year. And again, here's the triangle that we try to think about. It's pretty tricky. We're constantly weighing, you know, the establishing and adjusting our goals and our vision. You know, what is most important for us as we look forward to the next school year? We identify the priorities from that list, which we'll be talking about in just a minute. And then we trade it off, right? We go back and forth and that has changed since the last time I talked to people like three days ago. So this is always a really volatile time because there's a lot of things that come in. We get more information about our finances that really help us to solidify the budget. And that will be definitely at our next, at our next meeting. So the federal stimulus, a lot of interest in this. You know, we have a little bit over $3.1 million to work with. So this is definitely a work in progress and we're filing an amendment in the way that this money will be spent. And this will continue to change as we work on it over the next three years until July and August of 2024. So our reserves, again, we've been working really hard at replenishing our reserves because back during the G E A, we had to pretty much drain almost all of them because we needed the money to sustain programs and to support our students. So you can see back where it says in 2014, that's a while ago, our reserves were just under $5 million and that's what we'd like to get back to. So we've been working on that over time and you can see it went down to 3.3 million, down to $2 million back in 18 when things were really tough. And now we've built it back up to just under $4 million. And that's really good and helpful in terms of long-term fiscal stability. So we want to see those reserves continue to grow. And you can see the three X, the three that are Xed, those are our primary focus for reserves at this time. It all depends on how the budget ends up and what monies are left over to fund reserves. But the primary one would be the capital reserve. You can see capital 2019, that would be the reserve that's associated with the upcoming facilities project. So money that's put in there could be used to minimize the impact on our taxpayers. So that one's probably top out of all the reserves for this coming school year. The runs. Okay, so I just met with Senator Galivan this morning. So the legislature is still working with the governor to finalize the numbers. So that's usually positive. That usually means that there'll be additional money coming from the state. Now, this year, because of all the adjustments that the governor has already made to our foundation aid, that will probably be less than it has been in the past, but we are hopeful that we'll receive some additional funding. And we should know that hopefully before April 1st because their goal is to have their budget in place by April 1st. So we'll know that as we enter our budget discussions of the next few weeks. So again, here, a really great, big shot in the arm for us has been foundation aid. There's going to be another increase for next year. So that really helps us because those are sustainable funds that support positions and programs. But you can see there's some negatives in the area of B O S E is high costs, high cost, high cost, excess cost aid. Areas also a transportation aid. And that's partly to do with that we use less services because of COVID. So we spent less money on transportation. We spent less money on B O S E, so we're getting less money in return in terms of our funding from the state. But overall, you can see a nice increase of about $753,000. So the historical long-range plan, so this is, this has been a long process. So we went back to 2019 to see which ones were priorities. And so I put Xs where they were priorities for that year. And so if you see a blank space, what that means is it either wasn't like a point to fiscal education position, wasn't a priority in 19, but it was in 20, we solved that issue and that is no longer a priority for us. So this is kind of how it works, like one of the biggest priorities K to 12 was to add those three F T Es, K to four, to, to create six classes at each grade level and to maintain lower class sizes. So we've achieved that. So that priority was finished up in 2021. So it's no longer on the priority list. And so as we've gone through, you can see there's a number of things on these lists. Some things like the STEAM coordinator is still out there, right? We, we put a lot of money into our STEAM programs. Thankful to, geez, a lot of people, the foundation, donations from the Rotary, donations from one of our families that really have helped to improve our STEAM program. And so we want a coordinator in particular, we'd like one at the middle school and high school as well, but really focusing on Parkdale. So that will be a priority for sure as we enter the, this year and as we enter the 23, 24 school year. So again, here, we're just looking at the list and how it's developed over time. We have restoration of field trips. That's another one. So the P T O has been paying for our field trips for, I'm going to say 10 years. And so it's been a big burden for them, but they've done an excellent job raising monies to support that. And so we've been talking over the last couple of years, they're restoring it and so that they can focus on the author business. There'll be this great author business event at Parkdale on Friday. They're going to use their monies to do that and we're going to take back the cost of field trips from them. Again, you can see here, we have a long-term sub in TOSA. So we have a person in tech that's a teacher who is filling in, teacher on special assignment in our tech department that continues to be a priority for us. She's doing an incredible job. And right now we need that support in order to keep things running. Here we are at the middle school. Again, you can see how we've been able to accomplish like the honors experience. Now they call it LEAP. So that was a priority for us back in 1920. We've been able to put those things in place. We've been able to provide them with some additional supports and supplies to make it happen. The program continues to develop. Like you said, Mrs. Markland, Joe is doing an absolutely brilliant job with the program. And I'm really hopeful that we're going to. And I'm really hopeful that we're going to be able to get back to the presentations at the end of the year where they did them three years ago at Knox. What a great experience that was for our kids and for the people who were able to attend. So just really stellar. Again, sixth assignments, you know, we've been using six assignments, both at fifth and sixth grade. So we're, they're not a priority for this year because we're going to be replacing, as you'll see a little bit, with actual two full-time teachers. Those six assignments are really helpful for us because our teachers take on an additional assignment to take on like when we have an extra section of English or an extra section of math to keep class sizes down. They'll pick those up. So those are really helpful, but that's not our need for this year because we're we're kind of flipping the model a little bit. The academic resource center, again, it's it's been really positive. It's 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 an after-school program that provides for those kids who are struggling. And we've had a lot of success with that as well. And the social worker, you can see was a priority for us. We were able to fulfill that. And she started with us in twenty twenty-one. It was still a priority. So now that's off because she's in place and and doing a fantastic job for us. And replacing blinds. Okay, so the blinds are really old in the building. So that's been on the list for a number of years and it can do, will continue. And then continue with reading again, focus on what are our students need and if do we need to provide some additional support to make that happen? Go to the high school. You can see this first slide looks pretty good. We we accomplished a lot of what we needed. That was a lot of part-time positions to bring in additional electives to get back to the eight period day. So we were able to do that in the nineteen twenties school year. And then eventually you'll see we got to the eight period date, which was this year. And then restore electives is continuing because every year they come up with great ideas and we want to try to offer as many as we possibly can to our students. Let's see, okay, here, restoration, like restoration of building level of materials and supplies. So for all three buildings, this was a, has been a priority because their budgets were cut, gosh, way back in probably two thousand fifteen. And so this is money just to help them to run their daily activities, supplies that people need for the classroom, those types of things. And so it's been a priority and and Sisur just able to make that happen this year. So we're grateful. And then Mya Learning, okay, Mya Learning came on board and I think we've had explanations to the board and you can see it became a priority in twenty twenty-one and stayed on twenty twenty-one, twenty-two and we actually made it happen. So it's in place and so it's not a priority for next year. And then finally, let's see what we have here. Yeah, two point oh business teachers. So this is, you can see it's a priority this year. And we'll probably talk about it in the next couple of slides. We'll discuss it too. And so basically, speaking, what this is, is the the elective that we talked about are not the, actually the required course for personal finance and also the combination with personal health. We're not sure if that's going to be able to happen for next year because logistically coordinating all of it is is harder. So that might stay on for the next year. But we're also looking at a new STEAM business program. And we're going to share that with you, but not yet. But it's super exciting. And so I think you're going to love it. So we're not quite there yet, but we think we can make that happen. Right now they're doing some research, working with other local school districts that are doing it. And it's really about manufacturing and creating the concept of Blue Devil manufacturing. So I'm just going to leave it like that and we'll have more information for you, maybe at the next meeting or the meeting after that. So they're doing some, like I said, some discussions with local school districts and there's also a school district in the Midwest that we're working with as well. So here it is. Let's see, for the district, okay, so one right at the top was to improve our fiscal stress monitoring score. That became a real priority for us because, you know, we're in we are in pretty serious financial straits for a period of time. So we focused on that. We turned it around. Not that it's not a priority, but it's not at the top of our list anymore because things have leveled off and things have improved and we're in pretty good fiscal shape at this time. Like again, look at the next one, increase unappropriated fund balance of four percent. Because of our financial conditions, we couldn't hit the four percent mark. We needed to improve that savings, which we did. Let's see what else is up here. And then then you see all the reserves, all the reserves are on there. As I said, the one that's going to be most important for us for 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 next year is the capital reserve. And stabilizing the tax gap. That's that's I think a top priority for the board and and for the administration as well and for our community. So we really want to stabilize that tax gap and that will probably remain on there for. And then looking at some priorities in terms of administration and some additional resources. One point five FTE, School Resource Officer, we're really grateful. So we have Officer Cartwright with us and he's off to a great start. Really hoping to add another point five. Officer Cartwright will be stationed primarily at the high school. We'd love to have another point five resource officer at the middle school and to be shared with Parkdale. That would be a goal for us. The Assistant Principal and Director of Health, Phys Ed and Athletics. Again, our director, he had switched over to to be Assistant Principal, which then opened the position. We put in a person on special assignment for a couple of years. He's done a great job, Mr. Casselini. But now I want to get back to that directorship because there's a lot to manage outside of athletics around the health of PE, especially what we want to do with our health program for our students in terms of that personal health and wellness. The Assistant Principal, I I have some research that we've looked at. We we surveyed middle schools and elementary schools in the area and we received responses from thirty-two elementary schools and twenty-three middle schools. Of the thirty-two, fifteen of them have Assistant Principals. And everyone are, we have six hundred and four students in ours, everyone except for one, six hundred or more, has an Assistant Principal. And that's the same thing for the middle schools. We had twenty-three middle school respond, sixteen of them have Assistant Principals. Some have two Assistant Principals. And again, we have five hundred and four and anyone of that size has an Assistant Principal in place. So we wanted to kind of gain some research from the from the larger community to see what the standard was. And part of that is, is that, you know, things have changed. And we have a lot of projects and ideas that we're focused on. We talked a little bit about our our values and our vision for the next year. All those programs, DEI, social emotional learning, restorative justice, these programs for curriculum, the idea of mapping it, having people have time to work together, align it vertically and horizontally, it all takes time and it takes leaders. And so the people who are sitting in this audience right now are the ones that take that on every day and lead our teachers to do to do great things for our kids. And so if we want that done, we have to have the people to do it. And so here it is, our budget priorities for twenty-two, twenty-three. So you can see there's a lot of strikeouts. So we put this together and it continues to change. And part of this is is trying to balance the budget. So we're we're trying to balance the budget. We're trying to find a balance between creating new programs and new opportunities, looking where we need additional staff members and also managing the 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 tax rate and the tax levy. So it's it's a it's a complicated process. So you can see here at the top, we we're looking at the STEAM position. We've decided at this time that we're going to wait for a year. Because again, looking at the larger picture, we're going to have some numbers for you at the, in two weeks. Because we are looking at a deficit. We've adjusted that deficit. We've made a lot of progress over the last week, but we still need to make some tweaks. And we want to wait till we get some additional information from BOSI's. State aid may come through and so that'll give us a clearer picture and we'll have that for you next week. And we'll be discussing that actually at the budget finance committee meeting on Monday. Yeah, so in a couple of days. So we're going to continue to replace. So you can see the, we didn't need the point two FTE and ELA or science. We're going to actually have a little, an overage at the high school. So we're going to bring those teachers down to cover at the middle school. But we are going to replace the ten sixth assignments, the five that we're in. And fifth grade and the five that were in sixth grade with two new, two new positions. There's a small differential because obviously we're waiting for each of those six assignment. So it's a small differential, just sort of ten thousand dollars. We're going to go with the high school business person and that's going to be related to this new manufacturing program that we're going to have this combination between business and and STEAM. So we're really excited about that. Again, in in the area of special ed, K to twelve, we have ten sixth assignments. So ten teachers are picking up an additional assignment. We can remove those and replace those with two teachers as well. Again, a small differential, just ten thousand. The special ed piece down there is we were trying to look at our UPK program. It looks like we're going to be bringing all three classes back to to Parkdale. So we'll be running that. And so we're working on finding space for that right now, which is a little tight. But what will happen there is the reason we cross this out is that we were hoping to make it more of an integrated a program that's co-taught and supports special needs, but we're not able to do that at this time. We'll be able to pull that together for the next school year. Very complicated process. So it's it's a really, really burdensome process in terms of filing with the state, unfortunately. So we're going to have to delay that until the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. Now, of course, those students will still receive their services through committee on preschool and special education, but we wanted to integrate it into our program to to make it a little bit more authentic. Unfortunately, it's just not going to work. And then cyber insurance, we're still working on the cost of that. We we see other school districts in our area having big cyber attacks, losing data and those types of things. So we've gone to two-step authentication in terms of our our system in order to get insurance. And so actually, Mrs. Mazano is working on that right now. It's kind of brand new. So we're working on the details. So we don't have the numbers, but we will have it for you next week or two weeks. Like I said, School Resource Officer, one point five, we already have Officer Cartwright with us and I really would like to consider adding that point five for September. So we'll bring that cost to you as well. The Assistant Principal, which would be at either the middle school or at Parkdale. Bring back the Director of Health, Phys Ed and Athletics. And then the Capital Outlay Project, which we'll continue to do each year. Did talk to Senator Galvin about the possibility of increasing that to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars because as prices increase, we're getting less and less for that hundred thousand dollars. These capital outlay projects are really beneficial because they allow us to, between larger projects, they allow us to attend at the facilities and we get aid back the next year. So it's a really great process. We just need a few more dollars to make it happen. And so he said that there is legislation, so we're really hopeful of that. Okay, and this is the tax levy and limit calculation and I'll turn it over to Mrs. George.
Just a reminder that this is just the the formula for the tax cap and putting all the pieces in place that we received, all the various pieces of information. Our formula comes out to a three point oh eight percent levy increase. And no decisions have been made yet. The Finance Committee is still discussing, you know, as part of the budget development process.
Yeah, so what we'll do is we'll discuss this on Monday with the Budget Finance Committee to to see, what's it? Oh, Wednesday. Thank you. I'm sorry. It's always been on Monday. That's right. Yeah, it's usually on Monday. Sorry about that. And so, yeah, so we'll we'll talk with the Budget Finance Committee and we'll take a look at, there's the the limits, three point oh eight. We're going to take a look at the finances and what we've been able to find since our last meeting, how things have improved, which they have improved, have been improved considerably. So very positive. But we'll have more numbers for for that group then. And then they'll talk about making a suggestion where the levy is set. And then just the estimated versus actual tax rates. Go ahead.
The number to really look at is the bottom number, our full value tax rate. Since we have three different towns, each town has a different equalization rate. So they each have a different number per thousand, rate per thousand. But when you equalize it, everything is the same. So our actual full value tax rate has decreased on over a three-year period by seventy-four cents.
Any questions? So our fiscal accountability, again, we look at our expenditures for per pupil. You can see for East Aurora, Jeanette, we're spending just a hair over eight thousand dollars per student. Compared to speaking to similar school districts, they're spending about fifteen thousand, almost double. And for all New York State school districts, a little over thirteen thousand dollars. We look at our special education costs again, for our districts is over just over twenty-eight thousand. For other similar school districts to ours, it's over forty-one thousand. And then again, across all New York State districts, it's just over thirty-two thousand dollars. So, you know, when we look at the total expenditure, we're at thirty-six as opposed to fifty-six and forty-five. Again, I think we get a really great bang for our buck. Our kids are doing really well. Lots of opportunities for them at the end of their journey and we're doing it quite efficiently. So here it is. We're moving along and we're going to be, we have a couple of budget workshops. Today is the ninth. We have another one on the twenty-fourth and again on the sixth, so those are just two weeks apart. And then we'll go into the middle of April to the end of April when the we adopt the school district budget and property tax report card and we submit that stuff and then we hold a hearing on May fourth. And then we all know that we vote on the second Tuesday, which is May seventeenth, along with all the other districts in New York State. So that kind of wraps it up and I'll just open it up to questions.
Thank you. You know, that last slide should should show the people in our community that we don't have excess people. We, you know, we we're not spending money outrageously for administrators or for for staff members that are not needed because our cost per pupil is very reasonable compared to any one of the school districts in the state of New York. So that's just a comment, but let's let's go back to page twenty-three, if you would please. That's the twenty-two, twenty-three budget priorities. Brian, am I, Mr. Russ, I'm sorry, I, are we to assume that the number on the right for estimated cost is additional costs beyond this year's budget? So I think there may be a couple errors in there then because if, for instance, under the resource officer, I assume if we're simply adding point five, that it would not be a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. That would be a very expensive path out of resource office.
Yeah, that's a great catch. That would be thirty-five thousand.
Yeah, there you go. And and this similar comment regarding the Director of Health, PA and Athletics. We already have a person in that position who is a teacher on special assignment and that person is already making something in that same neighborhood. So so it it should be treated similarly to the ones up up top where you simply converted the six assignments to two point oh FTEs and the, so the difference between what we're currently paying the teacher on special assignment and what we would have to pay to have a director is the actual net additional cost to the budget. Am I correct?
Yes, that that's correct. There there is one scenario, if we would hire a director and also then maintain the health program, we would want to keep that person to provide that additional, what we would consider a required personal health course. And so therefore we would need one teacher to teach that. Right now, though, it's unlikely that that will happen because of logistically the the schedule. So yes, it would probably be better represented as the difference.
So if indeed that other scenario were to pass, that would be the addition of a new teacher in the health area. But at this point, you're not proposing that because it would be on the list of of additional programmatical changes.
Yeah, not, actually, the the teacher who's on special assignment would slide back in and then we would hire a director by director to replace him. So it would be hiring a new teacher because they're already on staff. So then it would become an administrative hire.
I understand. It's 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 just that that the person going, leaving the current position, the the TOSA position and going back into teaching would displace someone who was currently teaching. So.
No, they would be additional. That would be an additional.
One point oh.
Right, right. In order to run the the, what we talked about at the last meeting where we were talking about the half-year courses for personal finance and the personal health course. If we run those as required courses, we would need a new teacher to teach that that course. So so if it would. That's the other program. That's for the manufacturing program. Yes.
All right, so I'm I'm getting it. So does it appear in those, that list of of additional needs for each building? Does it appear on the high school sheet? Did I miss it?
I think it's in there. Yes, yeah. So on the last page for the high school, yeah, page twenty, thank you. The point six to one point oh physical, phys ed, health teacher. So it's been a priority because we've been talking about making it a required course for a couple of years. We haven't been able to do that. We were hoping that we could do it for this September. Not sure.
I thought we were talking about financial issues rather than health issues, but maybe I'm.
Yeah, it's going to be a combination of both. There's that personal finance course that is, let me show you this, just above it where it says two point oh FTE business teachers. That's to address that issue for 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 on one side of it, it's the personal finance course. And then it's the other course that's going to be in conjunction with the STEAM program with the manufacturing program that we're. Right, yeah. And and that's that's kind of generous, overestimating. It might. Right, yeah, and that's kind of generous, overestimating, it might be 1.5. Or it might be 1.6, so, but we're kind of airing on the side of caution.
And I, I'm not trying to be obstructionist, but I just want to be sure that, that we, that when we're adding these additional staff members, that we're gotten sure that we can afford it. And that it fits in with our plan to, to replace the federal monies with monies that are coming from the increase in foundation aid. So as long as the foundation aid will sustain these additional staff members, I support your recommendation to add these additional elective courses or even additional required courses like you're talking about. I just want to, I don't want to lay these people off into your, you know.
And that's, Mrs. George has built that into the budget, to transition the federal dollars that we'll be using to support these positions into the general budget over the next three years.
Thank you.
Helpful questions. Mr. Russ, I think maybe as the priorities solidify a little bit, and there's more information on cyber insurance costs and things like that, maybe the board, it will help the board, if there's just a little bit more information on this particular slide, reminding us which FTE business. To help us, the first chart was so helpful, the extension of showing us the priorities. But thank you for this, this is really great. Where were we, where are we, what's new, it's all right there and really easy for me to understand. This one is that next level. If maybe there was just a tiny bit more to tie us back to the previous chart, so I see high school 1.0 FTE business, if you could remind us which thing that was. And then to Dan's earlier point, maybe we need an idea of estimated cost, over, under, if it's breakage or if there's, if breakage is taken into account or not.
Yeah, I think it's a great point, Mr. Russ, you brought up about the Director of Health, P8 and Athletics, because if we don't move forward with it, then the person would transition back in, and then we would have an over. So there would be just the differential between the costs of the current person on special assignment and the new director, which would be far less than $90,000.
If you don't add this programming, we're going to have one too many.
Correct. So there'll be a savings there, and that's just due to the programmatic shift, right, exactly. So, and the same thing for the Resource Officer, right? Because we, our Resource Officer, now so we're really only adding 1.5 for the new school.
Other questions? Is still other?
First of all, thank you for the budget priorities for the previous three years. As Jessica said, that really, really helps us to see where we've been and where we're going. I was a little confused about the middle school. I know, Brian, you had said in the past that the middle school, 5th and 6th grade, is considered really elementary grades. Are we doing it so, just for clarification, are we doing it so that this upcoming school year, there will be six sections, 4, 5, and 6, just like at Parkdale?
Yeah, that's the intention, is to kind of maintain that. You know, we're, first of all, this just on Parkdale, not getting six sections, get it, get it to four, so that we can kind of, not only level class sizes and kind of reduce class sizes, but also reduce the movement of teachers between grade levels. Because we had a lot of movement, because we'd have five sections, one year, six the next, and third grade, four in the next, and, you know, so it was like up and down, and it made it difficult. So now it's been really great, because it's a lot more stable, and the class sizes are much more reasonable. Again, I think, you know, it's interesting, because as they were talking about their class sizes at the middle of high school, I think one thing that teachers shared with me last year, when we were on half-days, the idea that they had 10 or 12 kids in their classroom. And I think part of the reason why our data was as good as it was was because they were focused on ELA and math. They had uninterrupted time for two and a half hours. And they were really able to dig in and attend to those 12 kids. Now, can we run classrooms with 12 kids? No, can't afford that, it would be impossible. But the idea of focusing on that, to continue to keep class sizes as low as we possibly can, because it does allow them to give our kids personalized attention. The fewer kids that they have in class, the more attention they get to them personally. And they make greater gains. And so I think that's, as crazy as last year was, you know, one of the benefits, they said, it was really nice to work with this small group of kids, because we could really get to know them. We could really dig into their individual needs. And I think, like I said, the data shows surprisingly, I was surprised by the data, that the level of learning loss was relatively insignificant. And so, yeah, so those are the types of things we're trying to do, is again, at 5th and 6th grade, to create that same model. And then, you know, it's a little different when you move 7 through 12, because the kids are on, every period is different, they're on a different schedule. And our 5th and 6th is kind of a blend between the two. You know, it's a blend between the construction of the schedule at Parkdale and the upper levels of news. So, a little bit.
Thank you, I just wanted to make sure, I was trying to clarify that that's what it meant by the 10, six assignments. My other question was, we had ELA review, their curriculum this evening. Two weeks ago, we had business and role language review theirs. And they gave us recommendations and areas of concern. Where do we take those recommendations and areas of concern? Do they then go to the principal level? And then when you have your cabinet meetings, when you're discussing budget, they're brought up then? I'm just trying to figure out where do these recommendations and areas of concern get to be put into the budget?
Yeah, so what we'll do is, some of those things are, some of the things we can attend to more immediately, and then some things we'll have to plan for future years. But what we do with the recommendations, is we bring them back to cabinet, and we discuss them, and we say, okay, how can we utilize our current dollars to make this happen? What are our priorities, and what are their priorities, what do we prioritize, and what can we get done? And so, again, it's a work in progress, and a lot of that comes through their work on new courses. There's a great example, like the LEAP program. And you can see that, you know, they came up with that concept for LEAP. We worked on it over a period of a couple of years, and we were able to fund it moving forward. Same thing with some of the electives that Jason spoke about this evening. You know, how do we incorporate them? You know, we have a limited, we have a limited schedule too, I mean, you can't offer everything. But how do you offer those things on a rotational basis? What are the most, what are the electives that are of the most interest to our students? And so that kind of adds and flows, and what do we need to support them? And so the same thing with flexible seating. A lot of calls for flexible seating, I think, I thought Mrs. Markovich did a beautiful job explaining how she creates an environment where kids are comfortable, and they want to engage with literature, they want to engage in reading, they want to engage in writing, they want to talk with their friends, and they do this in a really comfortable space. And the end result is quite impressive.
I think, I just wanted to make sure somehow those are getting back to where they need to be. And my last thing was, I noticed that we do not have any additions for sports. And I know that we keep mentioning indoor track and how they are winning awards again. And that's one that has been in on the advisory committee for a few years. I'm just wondering where we stand with that out of all of them.
Yeah, well, we're, we added unified, we added unified sports for this spring. And so we're really excited, we have a coach and an advisor, because it needs both. And we have this great turnout of students who want to engage in the program. So this is for our students with special needs, and then they need a buddy to participate. And so we have maybe 25 or 30 kids volunteer to participate in the program. And we have eight athletes. So we have a lot of kids willing to participate, so it's 40, oh, 40, wow, okay, great. So we have a lot of kids wanting to participate. And then there's this awareness piece of it, that's the club part. And so we have two advisors for it, so that's the sport we're focused on right at this time. And so what will be happening for the 23, 24 school this year? Mr. Cassellian and Mr. Roberts are going to be meeting with the Athletic Advisory, I think, within the next couple of weeks. They'll have at least one more meeting this year to kind of set us off for the fall. In the fall, we'll put all those priorities up, one being indoor track. It's been, you know, on our list for a couple of years. Also, we are looking at lacrosse and volleyball as well, modified levels for those. There's also interest in hockey, so all that will be put on the agenda. And then there'll be some determination on what can be fitted to the 23, 24 school.
Okay, thank you, I just know that indoor track did a GoFundMe this year, which, yeah, thank you.
Yeah, just a couple of questions. And maybe Matt Brown could answer this better than anybody for me. When we did the tour of the school, I don't know, was this year or maybe it was last year? The teachers seemed to say they would just assume do the six assignment, and now we're saying we're going to do 1.2s. My, I have a concern that sometimes the 1.2s don't have the continuity with what's going on in the classroom, where the teachers already do. I know when we had chair teachers, it was a real problem. They weren't there for ELA time and things like that. And I understand some of that's changed, but I'm just a little concerned about the 1.2s. Wonder if you could clarify that for me? It's probably my own anxiety, I get it.
So, okay, sorry about that. The 1.2s are just in 7th and 8th grade.
Okay.
So, because those are the content specialists.
Okay.
And so, for example, our seventh grade class, our current seventh grade class is really large. So when they get to eighth grade next year, we're going to need additional sections in social studies and science. We haven't covered in English. So that's where, and working with Bill and Travis at the high school, we don't love the traveling teachers. We recognize, I think we'd all agree, that that's probably not the best best practice. But for next year's class, we feel like that's probably the best, when you combine, you know, everything together.
So this may not be permanent, you're saying it's more to adapt for that particular class.
Correct, and then. And the 5th and 6th is a little bit different, and we're still working on that. Matt LaRocque and I have been talking a lot with Jess, and we've received a lot of feedback from the teachers as well, as to what exactly that looks like, rather than the six assignments. And a lot of times, teachers really enjoy that sixth assignment. At the same time, a lot of times, teachers regret taking that sixth assignment. Because it's, what I have found in my feedback anecdotally is that it's a positive, effective way to do it if it's once every two, three, four years. Once it becomes an every-year thing, that's what we're starting to look at and trying to come closer to adopting that Parkdale.
Okay.
Whether we do it in both 5th and 6th, or if we do it in just 5th next year, a lot of those conversations and who's teaching what and props and all of that, those are happening right now. So we'll have answers in the near future.
Just as long as the continuity is there, so that we don't lose people in the shuffle, so to speak.
Oh, absolutely.
That, that would be.
Right, yeah.
Just me?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, no problem.
My other thought was for the special ed.
Can I just clarify, we do love our traveling teachers, we just don't love the fact that they travel.
We don't like.
In fact, sometimes we love them more, so. We don't love our traveling teachers, we.
Yeah, and they can be in two places at the same time.
They travel.
Well, what I'm saying is that it can be in two places at the same time. And if the time the kids need the extra help is ELT and they have to be at the high school, then you've got a conflict. And, you know, I think that is something we have to take into consideration for the kids' sake. The other thought I had in the 2.0 was about special ed. Now, are they going to have continuity? Because if there's any kid that needs continuity, it's a special ed kid, trust me. Yeah, I can't hear you, thank you. I have old ears.
So the thought with the two additional special ed is at the high school, there's currently, I believe, five, six assignments.
Okay.
And so there would be one person taking that, that would be one full-time person. Same at the middle school.
That makes sense.
Yes, so it would be in those two locations, just to replace those six assignments.
I feel better on that.
Because that gets, I think, where Matt was referring to, where they like it to start. And then as we're getting into annual review season, it's becoming quite burdensome, so.
Thank you, okay, I feel better, guys, thanks. I just needed that reassurance. And the other thought I had for Brian, just one last thought. On page 24, when you go out for your presentations, I'm hearing a lot from the community, I volunteer fish, and there's a lot of older people that volunteer fish, like myself. And what I'm hearing from a lot of them, they want to hear that this tax business is going to settle down. And it is, I mean, you've got it here in black and white, but they don't see this. And if you could just take the time to stress that to the community, that there is a leveling off. I just think that's important, that was just my thought.
Other at the table? Danny?
Just, I didn't want to interrupt people, but to just chime in on the two issues that Terry and Judy raised. Terry, if you remember back to when we used to have board books, and the board agenda would arrive in a book, Jackie remembers board books. Years ago, we addressed the same issue of how do we keep track of these recommendations as to whether we're accomplishing them or not? And we had agreed at that time to put a chart at the back of the book. And so anytime you wanted to, all you had to do was, if we were sitting here, we'd have a book, you'd just turn to the back, and you would see the list of recommendations. And you could ask the superintendent to report on which ones have been accomplished and which ones haven't. Then you could check them off, say, yeah, we did this one, we did that one. So there's some advantage to paperwork that seems to get lost in the electronic haze. The other point, maybe I misunderstand, again, this same chart with the budget priorities, but when Judy brought up the 1.2s that she was concerned about, I saw lines running through them. So it looks to me like there are no 1.2s being suggested for the coming year, that the suggestion for additions are 2.0s to full-time teachers in each of those cases, and not the 2, the 1.2 ELA and 1.2 science, am I correct?
Yes, that's correct. Originally, Mr. Ross thought he needed 1.2 in ELA and science, but Mr. Roberts was able to, well, we think, it's been confirmed 100% for sure.
Yeah, but at this point, there's no plan of higher 1.2 people.
Correct, yeah. Or who would pick that up would be an English teacher in 7th grade and a science teacher. Yes, exactly, right.
Something crazy, not to add more work to anyone, but we could, we could do that old list in digital form in Google Docs. It could exist if Ms. Lyons was so inclined, or we, thank you.
And then board members, maybe we can all spend a little time organizing our Google Drive, and everyone can save it and have it for reference any old time on your handy Chromebook.
You better add one more FTE tech help for board.
Thank you, any other questions or comments? Thank you very much, Mr. Brunson, thank you, Mrs. We are moving on to item 10. Is there any legislation to come forth, board? Thank you. Moving on to item 11, consensus items. Anyone need to withdraw, all, withdraw consensus? Okay, I have a motion to approve the consensus items. Moved by, is that Mrs. Daniel? Seconded by Mr. Cassidy, discussion. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? 伸伸， carried 7-0. Item 12, items requiring board action. Item A, the superintendent recommends that the Board of Education nominate Ronald D. Catalano to appear as a candidate in the Erie to Chautauqua Cataragus Bosse's Board Member election, scheduled for Wednesday, April 27th. I have a motion. Moved by Mr. Flowers. Seconded by Mrs. Malins, discussion. All of us in favor?
Aye.
伸伸， opposed? Carried 7-0. Item B, the superintendent recommends that the Board of Education approve for a first reading of revised Board Policy 5676, Privacy and Security for Student Data and Teacher and Principal Data. I have a motion. Moved by Mrs. Daniel. Seconded by Mr. Cassidy, discussion. Point out that there is only a change in the district's privacy officer from Richard Clemens to Kirsty Mazzano. The board, I guess, because that's our new person in the new role.
Brief comment?
Yes.
Thank you. The, this policy is one that has a requirement for annual activity. And over the years, I've noticed a number of policies have had paragraphs, usually the last paragraph in the policy that says, this will be reviewed annually, or this, in this case, it has to do with training, will be conducted annually. And so I think we need to work out a system whereby we have a reminder, a particular file or something, again, with the board, maybe board docs or whatever, but we need some kind.
But we need some kind of a list that that identifies all the policies that have annual requirements. Whether it's to review the policy or appoint someone or do some training, uh, whatever it might be. If we're required to do it annually, we're not going to do it when we have hundreds of policies and we don't, and we miss it because it's because it's not, it's not coming to pass. So we either have to assign someone to bird dog it and remind us of this annual requirement or we need to have some electronic solution.
To point, a point very well made and I think we can add it to our policy committee work. Although, any other comments? All those in favor? Opposed. Abstentions carried seven zero. Um, item thirteen, items of information, you'll see there a number of um, Bozey's and ECASB events coming up. Our next meeting is Thursday, Thursday. Please take note, Thursday, March twenty fourth. Possibly at the middle school. Okay, um, also, board members, um, I would like to schedule an executive session, one hour executive session for a board evaluation. We can do that via email. Okay, stay tuned. May I have a motion to adjourn? Moved by Mr. Cassidy. Seconded by Mrs. Malice. Discussion. A little bit, I opposed abstentions carried seven zero. Thank you.